Good afternoon, everybody. It is Wednesday, June twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-two at five P M. And I will call the board of the Free Town Board Select Meeting. Um, I want to make a note that this meeting is being recorded and it will be available on the town's YouTube page. Um, also, uh, we will be going into executive session and then returning back into open session. We will be going to executive session for the following reason. Um, executive session, uh, pursuant to Master Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, eight-seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, open meeting law, to review for consideration of release the executive session meeting, uh, meeting minutes for the following executive session meetings, uh, seven-one, two thousand and nineteen, and seven-thirty, two thousand and nineteen. So would thou entertain a motion to go into executive session?
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleppin Loeb?
Yes.
Sleppin Zager?
Yes.
Sleppin Matthews?
Yes. Alright, we are now out of this executive session and back into open session. And we will continue on, um, start with the agenda item one here. So, uh, discussion invoked whether approve weekly warrants one, one dash ten? One through ten. Sorry, one through ten. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion to approve weekly warrants.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, approve the open session, uh, minute, meeting minutes from five thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, six-six, two thousand and twenty-two, and six fifteen, two thousand and twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the open session meeting minutes.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, approval but to, to not, approval but not release of the executive session minutes from six twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion to approve and not release those.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, which company to be awarded the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three roadway materials bid? So, we, and this is for kind of, this relates, is agenda item five and six, obviously, right? Right?
Yes, the contracts.
Correct, that's just the first two.
Okay. So, um, we got bids for this highway salt and for, um, the road striping. And the two lowest bids we got for, for the highway salt was Sal- Saltine Warrior, Inc. And for the road striping was K-five Corporation. Um, I think it seems like a no-brainer, but the lowest bids here. Alright, so, um, I guess I'll just move on to agenda item five, then we don't have to vote twice on this, do we?
I think what you need to do is to, on the recommendations of the highway surveyor, there are several companies that got the bid.
Yeah.
That are in your packet, and you just have to approve that those are the ones that we're gonna go with, and then one by one, they'll have their contracts come in and we'll get them on the agendas and approve it.
I'm gonna start that. Please hold.
Do you need to see that? Here's the letter if you want it. So these are the companies that they're recommending that we go with, based on those quotes.
There's a block there.
Alright, so we're gonna go with, really, it's gonna be all of these.
Correct.
Okay.
They were the low bidders for their individual sections, like highway salt, roadway striping.
I gotcha, I'm there now.
Okay.
I, well, I, for some reason, I thought we were just doing the highway salt and the road striping. I didn't realize, I didn't see this part of it. It's my fault. Okay, so, um, I guess I'll just kind of do them all as one motion. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yes.
Alright, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, Salty Warrior, Inc., for highway salt, K-five Corporation for road striping, All States Construction for the following: stone seals, singles, stone seals double, stone seals twenty percent rubber, stone seals, uh, shimming, um, PJ Heating Company for a bit, uh, concrete at plant, and T, uh, Miozy? Sounds good. For, uh, big concrete in place as well, and, and, and also for coal, uh, planning. So I'll entertain a motion to approve all of these, um, all of these companies for, uh, the highway roadway materials bids.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then now we just have agreements for the first two. I'm totally there now. Alright, I'm a long day. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the, um, and sign the agreement between Town of Free Town and Salty Warrior, Inc., for highway salt for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the, sign the agreement between Town of Free Town and T-five Corporation for road str- striping for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now for the ambulance billing services. That's not in here, is it?
Thirty-three.
Yep, alright.
It should be here, at least the bids, the contracts I just handed to you.
Yes, that's right.
There you go.
You can take it apart if you need to.
There you go.
Alright, so we got three bids for the, um, ambulance billing service. Coastal Medical Billing came in at three percent, Comstar Ambulance Billing Services came at three point seven-five percent, and, um, Medisys Data Solutions came in at six percent. Um, so would thou entertain a motion to go with Coastal Billing, Inc., uh, for the ambulance billing services?
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, so, next is the agreement, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between Town of Free Town and Coastal Medical Billing, Inc., effective seven-one, two thousand and twenty-two through six-thirty, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next is the, uh, agreement between Town of Free Town and Greater New Bedford Regional Refuge Management District for, um, Municipal Solid Waste Disposal from effective seven-one, two thousand and twenty-two to six-thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. It looks like it was seventy dollars a ton.
Yes.
We don't have many options here, do we?
No, we don't have to do procurement because it's trash, so.
Yes, it's excluded specifically, right?
Yeah, and that, and that is actually a pretty good price. But it's only a one-year contract, I couldn't get any longer.
I was, yeah, so that, I'm trying to remember, I thought maybe this was just with, so this is separate, I mean, I know they go to Crepo, but this.
This is great.
That is great.
But so, I feel like last, because I've, I remember doing this.
Yeah.
It's the same thing, we got a one-year contract extension.
But we only got a one-year last tax. Okay, that's right.
They're running out of space.
Right.
So they're reluctant to give us too much. They're, they're, they're deciding on whether they're gonna close it or whether they're gonna.
So the other ones, what is it? What's the, um, waste energy one, C-mass?
C-mass, yeah.
Which was extremely more expensive, but it was something we had talked about, trying to get ahead of the curve.
We went to, yeah, we did go to C-mass, we did go to Crepo Hill. I wanna say there was one more that we, we did get between me and the Board of Health, you know, agent we called and got prices on, and this is still the best price.
Yeah, especially when, when you think transportation costs and everything else.
I was just saying, the transportation, you know, that's the other thing.
Because it is, it is very close, right? Yeah, but this is gonna be a problem, like, soon.
Soon, yeah. We're gonna have to start doing procure, yeah. I don't know if they'll give us an, and, and we just got this agreement, like, last week, and I've been working on this since probably February. They're, they're just not inclined to give you too much because they, they might be getting rid of some customers so that they can have more longevity because they're running out of space. Um, they did say that because, you know, Free Town is their neighbor, they were inclined, and we don't bring a lot of trash, that they were inclined to, you know, renew our contract. So from the beginning, he did, they did tell me that, so I wasn't totally fearful that we weren't gonna have a trash contract.
Yeah.
But at some point, they're gonna have to say no, right, because they don't have the space.
And that was something that came up last year was the, the whole idea of trying to get in with C-mass ahead of the curve because if all of a sudden ten towns are all going to them at the same time, they're not gonna take Free Town, you know, and they wouldn't be able to, what we do with it all, so.
I can stop, you know. Like I said, I did reach out to them, but I can stop trying to see, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, we got, thankfully, we have this contract for a year at least, right, so we're good there, but it's something we hopefully can be ahead of.
And just out of curiosity, I, I was trying to remember what it was last year, was it like, it was like sixty-seven, was it four?
Yeah, it was like sixty-four or sixty-six. It wasn't, it didn't go up a lot. That's why I said, we were really projecting originally it was gonna go to ninety. So our, if, if the original budget discussions I had with the Board of Health, um, Department was, we projected it to be ninety, but we got, we got the information prior to the final budget that it was gonna be seventy, so our budget reflects this number.
Yeah.
But, um, the original, what we were finding was that it was gonna be closer to ninety.
Yeah.
So, and I think it will. I think event, I think we're headed that way with trash.
Yeah, with everything.
Yeah, seriously.
So.
Alright, okay, thank you. Alright, so would thou, I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the agreement between Town of Free Town and Greater, Greater New Bedford, uh, Regional Refuge Management District for Municipal Solid Waste Disposal effective seven-one, two thousand and twenty-two through six-thirty, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, next is executive session minutes with redactions, or, sorry, just actually, executive session minutes without redactions to fulfill, uh, public records requests for executive session minutes from seven-one, two thousand and nineteen, and seven-thirty, two thousand and nineteen, from Robert F. Jones. So I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve to release the executive session minutes with, without redactions, um, for the executive session minutes on seven-one, two thousand and nineteen, and seven-thirty, two thousand and nineteen.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, uh, trash at K R Fields on Narrows Road.
Right, la- last week, we approved trash, um, for Long Pond, right? Typically, look at their leases, the trash is a, a tenant or type of, uh, responsibility. So by putting trash at Long Pond, and it pick up dog waste and anything else, the problem persists at K R Fields as well, right? Um, more so because now you have K R Field with multiple different leases that are there. So keeping track of the trash would probably alleviate a nuisance. So does the town do the same thing, and like Long Pond and add barrel there?
The other thing I was thinking about, what if we got a dumpster there with a lock on it? And then have the, you know, those who, you know, it's, I have a dumpster, so I know it's like a hundred and seventy bucks a month.
Right.
Right, and you can, I think you can do it for less than a full year, so if we had it, just for the, the, you know, the sports season, the baseball, soccer season.
Right. Well, they, well, those ponds, those fields are usually around.
Okay.
So my fear is by doing, so I thought of a dumpster. Then I started looking at Buck Stevens, and I drive by it every day. It's there for clothes to drop off and like things they can resell and everything else, or donate to a charity type of thing. But then you see people just dumping stuff off right in front of it.
Yeah.
It's not gonna happen if we leave a dumpster behind, or it'd happen if we leave a barrel behind, so I, I think the, the intent would be, if you leave barrels, like cleaning, helping, the individuals bringing their, their pets, their dogs, pick it up, dump it inside the barrel. If we go further into a dumpster, do we get the same thing? They put it in there, a little slide out right on the side, then they leave stuff on the side, and then the people have to, then, while they're picking it up, weekly, whatever the, the agreement is, picking up additional things like mattresses and everything else. So the least of, I guess the, you know, to fulfill what, uh, what we want is to keep it clean, right? No, no feces around, but also at the same time, no mattresses, baby seats, and things like that. Do we just add a, a barrel and see, and see where it takes us from there?
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, I.
Well, actually, we last, we, we talked about what a barrel would cover, so that way people are.
And then we have to, sorry, I didn't realize.
We did the dumpster route at the beach and the boat ramp and had to pull them because people were putting furniture, and even though we locked them, they were piling couches on top of them and countertops in the, in the, um, woods and stuff, so we pulled them.
People, people put stuff in my dumpster all the time.
Oh, good, mine too.
Oh, not that I know of. I, I think I have the, I have the community dumpster.
Sorry about that, bro.
Well, now that we know, it's all the right.
I was like, we can help, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the only thing is, we did call, uh, Borges Brothers and, you know, I said, do you pick this up? Because my understanding was that they were picking up trash at some of the, uh, ball fields, and she said absolutely not. It's not part of our contract.
Yeah.
It's the laces' responsibility, so I don't know if they were gonna charge us to start doing this, so just, just keep that in mind.
Which is, I, I wouldn't mind if, you know, obviously, we can negotiate a, a fair deal with that, 'cause I, I think it, it is outside of the norm and it, it opens them up to all kinds of different kind of risk, right, 'cause.
Well, I just think it's just they don't have, you know, they have so much time to get.
Yeah, I get that.
All the trash in the town, they have their set scheduling days, and they base their contract price on that, right?
Yeah, no, I get it.
Um, they've been very good, you know, as you know.
Yeah.
They always go above and beyond, but it's not something that required to do.
Trash, trash is always a problem, all different facets.
I'm pretty sure if we go back to the, to the organizations that use those fields and say, hey, listen, we've set up an account with our local vendor, here's the price that you have to pay at town rate per month, I'm fairly sure if we reach out to them, that'll be o- okay, we just need to make sure it's happening.
Yeah, so.
Keep track of it.
I hear you there, so, but, so as of now, so, so say, how a department went and put, put something down at the, um, beach, right? But we, we still, we don't have, but we don't have anyone pick that up.
I think Borges agreed to.
Borges agreed to pick that up because it was just gonna be the little thing.
Okay.
And they were gonna pick that up at, when they went to go to the beach, and then if it became problematic, they would circle back to us.
Okay, but, so, but K R, they, we think that.
I don't know, they said, and we called them just, 'cause I'm like, I thought they were picking up Little Fenway and not charging us. So I just wanted to find out, are they, you know what I mean, are they doing that?
So Little Fenway is, is, um.
It's a different.
If, if they, they paid for the services, Free Town League Athletic Association pays for a monthly pickup or bi-weekly.
Based for that. Okay.
Because we did have a.
Per the agreement, per the lease agreement.
And she said no, she said no, we're not, and we're not doing that. I didn't say, well, if we put a barrel down there, we, you know, I didn't have that conversation with her.
Right.
Um, I didn't have the conversation, oh, well, we'll actually talk to her, but, um, that's what, you know, just so you know. And, and maybe they will do it, um, because like I said, they always kinda go above and beyond, but I don't wanna have that as the expectation.
Yeah, so I think we talk to them, I think short-term solution, we'll put a trash can there for now, and then see what we can do from there.
Okay.
Um, I, 'cause I remember we did actually, I think when I just got on the board, we had a big trash problem at the bait, at the basketball courts, across here from the elementary school.
Yeah.
Right, and F L A took on that responsibility and, and, uh, cleaning it up and dumping it out on their monthly schedule, so.
And they took it out, yeah.
Which, which is great, it's just, it, same thing happens, right? They have dumpsters there, and people still dump, gosh knows what, um, dumpsters, so.
Yeah.
It's an ongoing thing, but I think keep the town clean and removing the feces, and, you know, from last week, the director of football saying that some of his players were rolling around in this stuff. We don't want that.
No.
So, uh, quick solution is see if, um, within the scope of work of the board's contract, we can make that happen, and if not, we'll, uh.
Yeah.
Touch, touch on it again.
Alright, so do you think, do you think we really need a vote, a vote on that, or just, if consensus kind of, or put a barrel down there and see if Chuck can do that?
Yeah, just vote for that, that'll.
Alright, yeah, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to, um, ask, ask the highway department to put a trash barrel down at K R Fields and, and direct that, I mean, to reach out to Borges to see if they can pick up that trash.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so next is, uh, the fifty-five thousand dollars of county ARPA funds to purchase the backup generator for the water supply. This was, um, voted on at special town meeting?
Yes, mhm.
And so, yeah.
And at that time, I said I would try to go through ARPA, but I wanted to make sure we had it through town funds, so I do believe ARPA funds will cover this and I could get the paperwork done. I'm waiting for an official quote from the, um, Water Department. Um, if in fact we paid for it out of ARPA, we're still counting ARPA funds, the money that, you know, that was, that was voted for at town meeting could be reparped. I'll put back into the general.
I was gonna say, does it go back into general fund?
Alright, perfect, that's great. So, um, any discussion on that one?
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to, um, to use the fifty-five thousand dollars of county ARPA funds to purchase a backup generator for the, uh, for water supply.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Chuck will put the trash can there first thing in the morning.
Perfect.
That was fast.
Okay. Alright, uh, next is authorize the town administrator to sign the asset, uh, de- deposition? Posit?
Dis- disposition.
Disposition, services agreement, asset disposition services agreement, alright, regard there. With propertyroom.com for an additional option to dispose of unclaimed property in the possession of the police department. I actually went on this website today, I was checking it out and saw some nice watches out there.
Russell Phillips.
So we accumulate all kinds of unclaimed property. Couple of years ago, the legislature changed the statute, the applicable statute, so that we can use online auctions. This particular entity, propertyroom.com, has been in business over twenty years. I think they have like four point one million registered subscribers. Um, I think there's like forty-three hundred police agencies. Um, they have been awarded a bid, a contract bid, through Sourcewell, which is a collective purchasing entity in Minnesota. Um, we are a member of Sourcewell. So whenever you have a collective, uh, purchasing entity, as long as they allow Massachusetts residents and businesses to, you know, bid, it satisfies our thirty B to the extent that we have to put it out on thirty B. But basically, our, our flank is covered by this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I looked at the agreement, and the duration is a year, it, it will renew, but it's either thirty days or ninety days notice, we, we can terminate it. Um, we don't have to exclusively use them. If we wanted to have a regular conventional auction like, like we did in the past, we could do that.
Or if there's something that we maybe wanted to do that was more local, have local significance for some reason, you know, I don't, I can't imagine that. Maybe if it was a rifle from the Civil War from Free Town or something, it would have seized.
Yeah, yeah.
I've been on that.
Absolutely. But.
I actually think it would be cool.
Our history with the town auction, you know, it's a small number of people, we'll get a lot of the, the stuff back that we said.
Yeah.
It's kind of a pain to.
Yeah.
To put it all together, but that option still remains.
Yes.
Um, what else was I gonna say about this?
And so, ju- just like how it works, right? So if we, they just pretty much, whatever the bid is, whatever they win, they take a cut, and then the town receives that revenue?
Yeah, so the first, is it thousand or two thousand dollars, we get fifty percent.
Okay.
And after that, it's a lower percentage.
Okay.
But they, they do take off any, like, shipping cost.
Yeah.
Um, now, with respect to transportation, um, if we were to call them to pick something up and they weren't, and it wasn't during their regular round in the region, we would pay transportation cost. But they've assured me that there is no cost, uh, when they, they pick up our items as part of that regional trip. So they'll pick it up either quarterly, and, you know, as, as often as you want, but, but once a month, they're gonna email us and say, do you have anything to pick up, 'cause we're gonna be in the area?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, I don't see any.
Yeah, I don't see a downside here.
I mean, would it be nicer to get a higher percentage or certain?
Well, yeah, but, uh, uh, some percentage of, of something is better than a larger percentage of nothing.
And stuff, and stuff that we didn't pay for, right? So if, if there's just all of a sudden this stuff's in front of you, and we're able to make whatever the percentage is off, but based on value, it's better than nothing, and so. And it doesn't create work on the town side of trying.
Shuffling items.
Shuffling items and coming up with an auction where, to your point, a low number of people show up and.
Can we also just start anymore?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a challenge.
Yeah.
Sure.
And we've got about fourteen bicycles up there that have been hanging around for years. They went to an auction, they came back, they went to another auction, it's like they.
Bicycle's hard to get right now.
That was gonna be my question, is if, if we send said item and it doesn't sell, do they send it back to us, or what?
You know what, that's a good question. I can, I, I don't, I don't think it comes back.
Yeah.
They just, if it doesn't sell, they dispose of.
Yeah, 'cause there you go, that's a good thing, 'cause to your point, we don't wanna send the bicycle off, have it come back, to send it back again, it's just creating more work.
For all the bicycles, is there a way we can donate to local charities, local markets?
Yeah, I mean, maybe, but I don't know.
Yeah, you could, you know, I mean, fuck, so you have, you have to itemize the list, bring it before the board. No, I, actually, it says unclaimed property is to be disposed of through auction under the statute.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there's a reasons.
Probably a good idea, but.
Yeah.
They don't, they, you know what I mean, they, they didn't say donate it to nonprofit or, you know.
Well, that, that gets messy, you could donate to a nonprofit that, then someone would go and.
Why didn't you do our nonprofit?
Yeah, exactly, that just probably gets messy.
Yeah, but.
In your hearts in the right place.
Right, I, I just think of like, you're right, like, I, when I'm trying to find a bike during COVID and everything else, couldn't find anything, you know, for, for the kids, or even online, couldn't find anything. So I'm wondering if there's still families out there, still trying to find things that, I've reached out to organizations locally, like, first, Citizen for Citizens, they do, I'll reach for, that we use already in town, they also do things for children. Is that something we reach out to and say, hey, we have fourteen bikes, can you get rid of these by the end of the week? See what they say.
Yeah.
Whereas trying to put it on auction. I actually see a watch going for auction, I'll go against you and get, I don't know, a watch or two. Bike, uh, to me, it's like, we just give that to the kids.
Yeah.
Alright, but, any other questions on, on this particular?
No.
Very good, alright, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to authorize town administrator to sign the asset disposition services, I said that right, that time? Agreement with propertyroom.com for additional options to dispose of unclaimed property in the possession of the police department.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, moving on, Board of Health.
Alright, agenda item number fourteen, discussion invoked to approve the town administrator to sign off on vaccination, vaccine paperwork. Agreement and amendment between the Town of Free Town and the University of Massachusetts Chain Medical School for acquiring vaccines and billing services. So this is all back to everything that came up with law and everything, and some changes happened, but, you know, having you sign off on it makes that a little more.
Yeah, 'cause there's a lot of little different agreements, and we've been waiting for the agreement to come back, it's gone back and forth between town council and then. And so actually, with the time we were doing this agenda, I didn't have the final draft, so I just said this would be easier, 'cause it, it did come in, but it'd be easier if I can just sign it.
Yeah, absolutely. Do you guys have any issues with that?
Not at all.
Obviously not. So with that, I will entertain a motion, um, to allow the town administrator to sign off on the vaccine paperwork agreement and amendment between the Town of Free Town and University of Massachusetts Chain Medical School for acquiring vaccines and billing services.
Alright, I'll make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, personnel board.
Personnel board, alright, item fifteen, discussion invoked whether approve the annual reappointment of individuals on attachment A, which is the master list pages seventy-one through seventy-seven of the attachment. Uh, this is just, uh, annual reappointment, uh, I believe we've had a couple of weeks to look at these.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't see anything that needs to be changed today.
Yep.
Any, any discussion on it?
No.
Alright, fantastic. Uh, I, I entertain a motion to approve the annual reappointment of individuals on attachment A, pages seventy-one through seventy-seven.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, I'm, agenda number sixteen, approve the following appointments. So, because there are different positions, I'll, I'll read everyone of them.
Done.
So, number A, well, letter A, uh, Mark Rocha, Aroka, as the gatekeeper, effective seven-one, two thousand and twenty-two through six-thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, B, Michael T. McHugh, as open space consultant, effective seven-one, two thousand and twenty-two through six-thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. C, Victoria DeAntoni, as senior clerk, conservation, effective seven-one, two thousand and twenty-two through six-thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. D, Kevin V. Dismares, as soil conservation board, effective seven-one, two thousand and twenty-two through six-thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. E, Tim McIntosh, principal clerk, effective seven-one, two thousand and twenty-two through six-thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. F, Lauren Goyet, seasonal part-time parking control officer, effective six-thirties, two thousand and twenty-two through nine-ten, two thousand and twenty-two. G, Aiden with an I, flood seasonal part-time, uh, parking control officer, effective six-thirty, two thousand and twenty-two through nine-ten, two thousand and twenty-two. And H, Aiden with a Y, four-year, season part-time parking control officer, effective six-thirty, two thousand and twenty-two through nine-ten, two thousand and twenty-two. And discussion?
I will, I, does it matter because we have a declining of a position to remove?
Well, he originally claimed for the, the position as far as, uh, what was presented, but I think we can keep him on and put him on a, um, on-call, uh, status, so it's easier to put him on for today, and then if we need to resend down the road, it just makes more sense just to, um.
Yeah.
Make, make sure it's all, all, all in there now, and we can, uh, sign off, and then if we have to change it down the road, so be it.
Alright, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the following, uh, approve the appointments.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, number seventeen, discussion invoked on the memorandum of agreement, M O A, between the Town of Free Town and Free Town Police Association regarding pay rates for details for the Free Town fireworks.
Discussion, so this, this is identical in structure to the one you executed, uh, in the recent past for the boat ramp. Um, this is particular to this particular, um, event only, doesn't extend into the future unless you guys, uh. Agree with the union to change that at some point. We've tried to get five detail offices to supplement personnel for the third. As of about four o'clock, we had zero. Um, I'm thinking, one of the reasons is um a lot of departments have problems uh filling details. But the current rate is is not attractive, doesn't incentivize anybody to to come here. Um, that's the reason this is in front of the board tonight.
So what's the current rate that is not as attractive to many?
The current rate's about twenty eight dollars.
I can understand that.
This is between the hours of six and I would say midnight.
Um, well, the they'll come in about four thirty and then we'll go over the uh the deployment schedule. And then they'll actually, you know, physically deploy about five o'clock-ish, five fifteen. And then we'll go from there.
As long as it takes, right?
Yeah.
In in past years, what's the impact um to the town, like we have a, have we had any arrests, any DUIs, any?
Sure, so we've had D DUIs, we've had public urination, we've had people walk and enter into homes, you know, in in the village. We've had fights, we've had lost children. Um, so you know, any difficult things, those type of things.
Massive people.
Um.
And just.
Hopefully, this is the last year, we have to uh use our current radio system because um you can't talk. Can't talk to the station, you can't talk to each other in a lot of, most of the area down there. So that's that's always a a challenge, you know? But I would say, over the years, the the attendees have been overwhelmingly uh pleasant to deal with, you know?
Sure.
But I I I would also say that we we may, you know, you may be looking at a different venue in the future, because we we we're packing all kinds of people into a. A small footprint, you know?
Yeah, just park.
Correct. What do you estimate, ten thousand plus?
Um, I I don't know if it's that high, uh but, yeah, I would say at times it could be like five thousand people.
Yeah.
And now what's happening is, it's just not the park, they're um they're congregating along South Main Street and into the business parking lots and things like that. I'm sure many of the businesses do appreciate that, they're selling, you know, food and and drinks and stuff like that, but. Just something on your radar.
So, let me ask you this, so I see details throughout town, whether it's uh, you know, traffic duty or construction details. What's the rate that the officers are applying for that, what's that rate? Is that the same rate that we're putting at, twenty eight dollars, or is it higher?
So the rate that we're asking for tonight would be the officer's overtime rate or fifty two dollars. For private details, like you you see, it's fifty two dollars. Public, uh, under the the collective bargaining agreement, if it's a nonprofit, it's lower.
So theoretically, this is done by the fireworks and parade committee, right? It's a committee of the town, but is it considered part of the town, is it, because it is a.
We have to pay it, right, whereas the private ones.
Yeah, so this comes out of the police budget.
Yeah, whereas the private details come out of.
Uh, yeah, and and the reason for this is because we can't get anybody at twenty eight dollars an hour.
Yeah.
They just won't do it.
Sure.
But you're talking about twenty four dollars more an hour, I mean, in in so chief, in in your estimation, if we if we jumped it to fifty two. You would have five people sign up and we would be.
Well, I I.
You would.
It would certainly incentivize people to sign up, um, you know, uh, it's a tough time of the year, right?
I guess, July third, yeah.
Uh, July third, you know? And uh, we may be competing with some other areas, parades or fireworks, et cetera, so, yeah, it's always a challenge.
Yeah, but to your point, I mean, we're getting people to show up for the construction on the side of the road at that rate, so hopefully.
But we're not even doing that, we're not even doing that, we have many details that are uncovered because because we can't get people.
Yeah.
So this is, this is across the board, I talked to other chiefs about this. Trying to get the new generation, this is how they're referred to, uh, to work overtime, challenge, never mind details. I believe at Alloboro, Tom, some other communities are forcing offices to work details. So that roads can be opened up for utilities, et cetera, we haven't got, we haven't gone to that. But what you're gonna see in the new future in front of you is a request um to create a position called a traffic controller, okay? And that traffic controller position is a civilian position. Those, the incumbents are only called when the collective bargaining agreement members are exhausted, okay? They have to have certain training, but it's at their expense, certain types of uniforms at their expense. Um, they'll have to have DOT flagger certification. I've checked with the insurance company if they sustain injury, they are covered within the scope of our work has come. Um, they're not within the bylaw because they're not regularly scheduled or employed.
As an independent contractor almost, right? That makes sense, though, I can see that.
What a job, what a job, if you were, if you go to school hybrid or online.
Yeah.
You you get a call, can you, and then the other twist of that is whoever we hire, it's the understanding that. They will make themselves available for July third, July four, you know, and some of these other things to direct traffic, so.
Yeah, because that's a big part of it, right? Four corners becomes, especially when everyone's trying to get out of there.
Oh, it's a nightmare.
It's crazy.
My, you know, I live right down the road from it and once it it ends, you have thousands of people. Both sides of the road from every, it it just looks like a swarm, no matter where you go, it just, it takes hours to clear out, you know?
Yeah, it takes a while, because everybody's walking down the.
Right. He goes everywhere, so, I I it's it's, you know. I get it, we we definitely need, I mean, you know, X amount of bodies there as far as law enforcement, police and fire, everything else, right? At the same time, I'm I'm conflicted, because it's, yes, fifty dollars an hour, we still can't guarantee that we're gonna get officers there.
Really still set incentivize, right, versus twenty eight dollars, I mean.
My 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 concern is we're, you know, we're nearly double the pay rate of twenty eight dollars an hour. You know, the, I would say the town would want police there, obviously, we want police there, obviously.
Well, I think we need police there.
Oh, so it's no, it's.
I would say this, at twenty eight dollars, we're not.
We're gonna get it.
No, absolutely, I I get that.
So the question is, how do you incentivize that, but at the same time. You know, whatever whatever you choose for a fee, you can't have a a reserve officer making fifteen dollars an hour coming in. Because that's what his rate would be versus, so that's why it basically is, is, you know, they make twenty, they make overtime, which we need full. Or they make the fifty two, so any po- present part-time Freetown police officer, which we only have one left, or anybody from the outside would make the fifty two.
Yeah, and I mean, to me, it's a no brainer.
I mean, this is just for that one night. Yeah, no, no, like it's, I I I get the one night part, and and we s- we want police there, we need police there, so it's just. Is fifty two dollars the answer, right, is, so.
It's a better answer than twenty eight.
I, one hundred percent, I I agree with that.
Well, I I think in any, for this particular uh scenario, yeah, I think the answer is to do that. And then we, and then you're gonna have to determine what you wanna do in the future.
And and that's my concern, is we do it, we say yesterday, fifty two an hour. Prices seem to be going up all over across the board on pretty much everything, does that mean next year's firework, we're paying sixty dollars an hour, and that's something that.
Well, it'll it'll never be more than whatever the rate you guys, well, the board negotiates with the union, right?
Working on that.
Yeah, which, right, which is being worked on in the background, um, and it's like, it's one of those situations that. Put our foot forward here, is that, since, does that change negotiations down the road, because you already know we're willing to spend this.
Well, they haven't put it on, they haven't put it on the table, because um the average overtime rate for a Freetown office is fifty nine dollars. And so the majority of officers are gonna be making, if they work, they're gonna be making more than that anyway, so.
This this really.
Yeah, this is to narrow, this is to attract people from outside to take the.
Yeah, so that makes more sense. So I think that's a better explanation to people watching the town, everything else that we've, you know, we've drummed it down to get the best rate. And then, of course, if it's a senior officer, they could be making more no matter what. Okay, that makes me feel better, as a for a vote. Okay, all right, any additional discussion?
No.
Okay, in that, in that case, um, I entertain motion to move forward with setting the pay rate at fifty two dollars an hour. For the details for the fire, for the Freetown fireworks on June third, twenty twenty two. I I think you need to reword that to uh the motion to what the, to to the um. Set the period. To vote for the memorandum of the agreement, because that, because it's a, it's a union thing. Yeah, I'll take it all back. I entertain motion to vote on, to, I'm sorry, I entertain motion for the mem- memorandum of agreement, MOA, between town Freetown and the Freetown Police Association. Regarding and setting the pay rate at fifty two dollars an hour for details for the Freetown fireworks on June third, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty two, sorry. July. July third, twenty twenty two.
All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, that was a mouthful. Does that accomplish it?
Yeah, we'll just get them.
Fifty two dollars an hour or a time and a half.
Well, that, right, that's what the memo says.
So I just wanna make sure that's clear, because we.
Because he called out the dollar, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe, let me read.
Yeah, maybe just just read.
So so just vote to approve the um memorandum of agreement as written, I think. Okay, um, I entertain motion to vote yes on the memorandum of agreement as written between the town of Freetown and Freetown Association. Regarding pay rates for details for the Freetown fireworks.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, sorry about that. No, it's whatever, we'll make sure we get it right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. The routine discussion and vote whether approve carryover up for Town Accountants, two hundred and sixty-three, six hours from fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-three. All right, open for discussion. So.
It's a part of our agreement, right?
Right.
So so there's not much discussion.
Right, it's uh, it's it's in, it's written in there, nothing much you can do about it, it's it's part of, part of the business.
Yeah.
So, any for, any additional comments, discussions? All right, in that case, I entertain motion to approve the carryover for the Town Accountants, two hundred and sixty-three, six hours from fiscal year twenty twenty-two to fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, number nineteen, update on the kiosk and staffing at Boat Ramp and Beach. So, uh, this past, last week, we had some interviews of ex- of a number of applicants. And we decided to, as as discussed in uh agenda number sixteen, to hire uh individuals to man the beach in Boat Ramp. And of course, the kiosk has been delivered and installed. Um, and I believe all the agreements are in place. Right? Yes, we're just waiting for the keys to come in, there's these like certain keys we need, um, so I would say midweek, end of next week, we should be ready.
Great.
So the only thing really discussed is who do these people kinda go to, who's their, not not the boss, but what's the department that they go to? Right, so in the past, it's been kind of a mixed bag of individual all departments, right? I think the Board of Health had it at one point, I believe, I I believe the building department had it at one point, uh highway department has touched it. So who's the best person, uh, or the best department to really handle this? I I really don't want it to be Deb, she's busy enough and and there's plenty of things at the beginning of the fiscal year that will need her attention. Um, this is only one until Memorial Day, right? So September.
Labor Day. Yeah, we have Memorial Day, right, Labor Day is, yeah, I messed those up too, so.
Labor Day is. Yeah, I was speaking to George. Um, so, you know, that kind of brings up the discussion, is do we entertain in a future meeting to hire a director of parks, right? Some, really, we have a lot of, we have a lot for the community to to do. You know, this individual can then handle this, as well as events at parks and things like that, get us a list of things to do in these parks. We have funds available to do different things, whether it's picking tables to planting trees, whatever it is, this individual can do that down the road.
Yeah, that we, we'd have to be at least a year old from that, though, to get that kind of, I mean.
Absolutely. So that's just food for thought, food for down the road.
Yeah, no, I.
No, and it's a good topic.
I I think, yeah.
I think we also need to bring in the open space and rec committee, right, work with them.
Exactly, that's what I was thinking, that's, that's a tandem right there.
I don't want it, exactly, they're, they're all there trying to do good work, let's get them involved and hear what they have to say about it.
And I don't know if that that'd be a full-time position, but definitely.
It'd be a summer thing, um.
Or like, yeah, I mean, maybe at least, I don't know, fifteen hours a week or something, ten hours a week?
I agree.
Like, but then, again, empower them to, you know, make decisions, deal with the kind of stuff we're dealing with now with the trash and, you know?
Right, absolutely.
Or is that, you know, or do we, see, this is one of those weird things, I don't see where it fits in. Right, even like right now for the Boat Ramp.
Right.
And the k- like, uh, beach staff, like, like where does it fit in? Like, I I'm trying to remember.
Well, usually a parks and rec director would oversee all of our open space, our beach, uh, um, Porta Shores, uh Hathaway Park, the bandstand. Um, all of the ball fields, you know, and they would then create programming, right, create programming for the kids, maybe they bring back swimming lessons, maybe they. Do volleyball games down on the beach, I don't know, they would create that, maybe they do a movie night on the beach, right?
Yeah, exactly.
That's what they do, they'll create programming, usually for families and children, and they, you know, they might charge five dollars, come with your family and watch a a movie on the beach, we're gonna set up.
We're gonna watch Jaws on the beach.
Right, 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 you know, um, or they might have a a a festival day down at Hathaway Park, where they have an ice cream truck come in and whatnot. That's what, that's what they would do, they would create that programming to do those things for families and children of the town, um. So yes, it's something that definitely would have to be um funded, you would have to have funding for the projects to start, right? So it would be something we would have to look towards maybe next year, but I, you know, with that may be a solution, because we do have sort of all these. Things that end up falling on our office and we absolutely will take care of them, but it is, you know, our weekend now, we're gonna be dealing with beach and Boat Ramp.
Yeah, no, that like, that's, that's a problem.
And even, and even the Board of Health, right, Kevin is saying, look, he's already working weekends, he's gotta go check. Uh, the 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 strawberry festival here, just go there and check, he's, I guess Robin's that that big yard sale, then he's gotta go check something there, I'm not sure what. But he's already working with the Board of Health, he's already got his own commitments to do, so I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure, I just know. Uh, like I said, this weekend coming up, I'm not even gonna be around on Sunday, so there's no way I could go down there and deal with anything to do with it. On Monday, yes, I'll be around, so that becomes the problem now, and I committed seven days a week to be.
Yeah, no, it's not fair.
In the summer. It's not fair to you or anybody else, so who does, let me ask you this, you know, trying to get a solution. The, we just hired someone for uh opening, closing the gates at Porters Passage.
Porter Passage, yeah.
Who would they report to? Probably Conservation, I would say on that one. So to me, it kind of, that's closely, more closely matched than anybody else, but is the Conservation able to take that on? Except Conservation is a volunteer board, right, there is no employees under Conservation, so maybe once we hire a Conservation agent, in which, you know, we've, we've created that position and somewhat funded it this year. Yeah, right, that's right. Yeah, that's correct. The actual hiring hasn't happened, um, as of yet, so. So short term, go there, long term, uh, uh, director of parks down the road. Yeah, so um, I just like, you can't ask a volunteer, not that, I mean, we have some wonderful volunteers and they might do it, but I, I think that's kind of. Yeah, it's a lot to put on somebody. Lot to put on, I mean, they're already giving the town their time and doing their meetings and going out and inspecting things, so. Um, so for short term, I I mean, I don't know, there is, we've we've gone around and around.
I can't think of, I can't think of anybody.
You know, the only thing we have thought of internally is like it would take turns, but it's just, you know, just.
But if it's gonna be that, then it needs to be not just our department, it can't just be the selectmen's office, if there's gonna be taking turns, and maybe, maybe that's something, trying to get people to sign up.
But like.
Big weekends, volunteering.
So, well, I guess it's, let's talk about what, what. The, like this, like what we're talking about here, so, you know. What they would they actually need to call somebody on, on the weekends, if it's a police matter, they call the police, right?
Right.
That's one thing, but like if they can't like get into the shed, or if like, you know, there's some non-emergency.
Yeah.
Problem, who are they gonna call?
The kiosk runs out of paper, the kiosk needs to be emptied, the kiosk isn't working, I don't know how to get it working, um.
Is there a hotline for that thing, I'm assuming there is, right?
Yeah, but what, I mean, if there is, but we expect.
We'll work out the details. So my only other thought is possibly, and and let's hope she's not watching.
You know, this person.
Uh, maybe transport station where they have, um, they have their staff Saturday and Sunday, maybe not Sunday, cause I think it's just gonna be Vicky there, or no, it's gonna be John.
John.
Um. You know, where there's a per diem guy there, and they have usually three people on Saturdays, maybe, I don't know, that, it's not, not, definitely not in their. Um, job descriptions, but John is a per diem guy at the transfer station. Other than that, I mean, like I said, it's it's gonna fall to us.
It's directly, it has to be somebody that's on duty and ready, right?
But.
To answer a phone call, make a decision, case be off-duty employee, but then be kind of like there, maybe as far as their thirty-six hours, if that makes you right.
Yes.
That's gonna, my biggest issue is you're gonna have employees gonna say, that's not in my contract, that's that's not part of my union contract, I'm not doing it.
Right, and they have the right to do that.
And they, if it's not a dick, then that's a hundred percent why they're part of a union, right?
Yeah, I, absolutely them.
Not the only reason, but it's part of the reason, so to protect themselves like that, so, I don't know, I, there's no easy answer to this. I guess one, I think Trump brought up a valid point in that a lot of the stuff is gonna be calling the police, that type of stuff, right? So that's naturally who they're gonna go to, and then it's kiosk problems. Well, kiosk, I would think that this kiosk must have some sort of help desk, and I'm not saying, I don't.
Most of the kiosk problems, you can have protocol written out for the kiosk, if you're having a problem with the kiosk, then they they switch to cash.
What did you get calls for?
What did I get calls for, um?
Yeah, I guess, I'm sure the problem.
Staff members, you know, I'm sick, I'm not coming in, um, they wanna switch shifts.
Yeah.
Um, just people were being nasty to them and they just needed to talk to somebody.
Sure.
Um.
Because you you can't, yeah, you do need a boss.
And I I stopped by frequently so that they knew someone was, was there and someone was watching, you know, so it wasn't a free-for-all, cause there'd be these times, like I'd go by and. Maybe, you know, you're supposed to start at eight and, you know, it's pouring rain and we would tell them, don't come if it rains. So we would have to tell them, don't work today because there's not gonna be anybody there, kind of thing, so it's just overall management of them.
Which is fine for us to do during the week, I don't have any problem with that, and I don't have any problem doing it, I just physically can't necessarily be.
It's not, it's not.
At the boat ramp, I can't run down there and and help them because I'm not always loading.
Smart decision. None of our employees who work the seven days, we give everyone each time off, it doesn't matter.
And are these folks gonna be deployed at both the beach and the boat ramp, or are we just doing the boat ramp with these new hires?
Well, I think right now the the biggest thing would be the boat ramp, if we have a staffing. Uh issue, but we have a s- lack of staffing, then we consolidate, and I think the biggest need is right now is the boat ramp.
Cause I don't believe, I don't think we've gotten a police detail to sign up for any. Shifts at all either, so we had hoped that we could rely on that, but that didn't happen.
So without, with the with the kiosk in full operation, which it's not going to be, cause it doesn't take cash and won't until November. The biggest issue there is closing the gate, so that people don't back their boats in and then go park somewhere else once the parking lot is full.
Right.
So we have to kind of look at when would that timing be where we need someone to close the gate, and I I'd have to defer to Luanne, who did this last summer. But that's, I talked to the chief and he had said last weekend, that's, that was what ha- you know, that parking lot was full, and so they started to, you know. Backing their boats in and going parking on all over the place.
Yeah, this is the purpose for that, it's not to have it happen.
Right, so the purpose, so the most important thing is to have someone down there at sort of prime time to close the gate. And of course, in the beginning to take the cash payments, um. To, you know, so that's our big, our big, so we only really have two staff that send two people to work. And what were we thinking about staffing it for hours, we've talked eternally, thinking Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday holidays.
Right.
And then, we had originally had hoped to have enough to have two staff per day and overlap them in the middle of the day, but given that we only have two. I don't know what your thoughts are now on that.
Well, the two, you know, we were hoping for four, which would have been nice, so one quick solution there is put it back out there, keep it open, see if any more people apply.
We'll do that.
Play it by, play it by ear there, um, and as far as the two that we do have, maximize their time, right, get with them, I believe. The two that are on board, leave one anytime, the other was Saturdays and Sundays, from what I can recollect. But then work with them and see what their max hours it can be, right?
But what would, what?
They can only go up to nineteen.
Nineteen.
Yeah, what would you prefer, I'm thinking probably Friday's just one shift. Cause they'll be probably coming a little bit later in on Fridays, the boat.
Yeah, I would think Saturday, Sunday are probably the busiest of times.
Yeah, so maybe Friday you do like ten to four.
Yeah.
Jump in anytime when.
I don't own a boat, so I'm I'm, any any boaters?
Ten to four on Fridays?
I don't have one yet, you know, but.
I think that would probably be fine, the bulk of yours is gonna be Saturdays and Sundays.
Yeah.
Right.
And you have a lot of the fishing tournaments.
Maybe you will have some people put in for Saturday, Friday night, cause they wanna go out on the pond.
Right.
I I don't think it's as much so Saturday, I mean.
And they do have slips, so if people aren't able to pay at the kiosk and they wanted to pay cash, there's like a slip they'll put on their windshield. Catch me when you come back, so you wanna make sure you have someone there when they're coming back in, um, to be able to catch them, then.
So I think, so so we think ten to four, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and. Uh, holiday Mondays.
Say it a little earlier than, right? Things, you know, if I was gonna go out on Saturday, I'd probably get there to maximize my day, right? I'd get there early in the morning, I'd get there, you do seven, nine, you know, that's just, that's just me, I don't know.
I don't know if Saturday you wanna do seven to like. One, and bring somebody else in and work like twelve. To five or six or four, I don't know.
Well, yeah, and I. I'd be okay on this one too, like, if you guys like look at you, I don't think, I don't think we need to vote on the actual hours operation thing, and and if, I I would defer to Carlos, and and you guys working on that?
We're just trying to get some.
We both agree so.
Okay. Alright, we do that.
I believe you voted last year that the town administrator could manage all those aspects.
Okay, yeah, because I, I just don't, I I don't think we have all the information here, we kind of.
Yes.
And it's gonna, it might change, as, as.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to be flexible with that.
Yeah, because we are the flexible to the the couple employees we have, right, so.
Right, and it might change in terms of, you know, just the weekends and what's busy and what's not busy.
And then on the first issue, like, I don't think we have a, a, a solution.
Right.
I hate to say that, I just don't think we do.
So here's my thought, he has one, one thought, right, because it's gonna fall to me and Luanne, and we'll, we'll definitely figure it out, um. And not for myself so much, but I'm wondering, you know, with the parking clerk, we pay a stipend every month for the parking clerk, who hasn't, uh, since I've been there, done. Had any parking tickets, but may now that the beach, that the beach.
Yeah, I like where you're going with this.
So maybe we offer a stipend.
To whoever wants.
To whoever's going to be there.
Last one, like with you, you 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 does everything.
You never know, right, like I'm just offering that up, like, that's, again, we're back to incentivizing people, it's your weekend, like, we 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 both work.
Yeah. Right.
I mean, we work not just nine to five, I mean, we work a lot of hours during the week already, so and like I said, we will definitely, it won't fall to the wayside, we will take care of it, but.
That's something I'm interested in, if if you put that internally in the office, you know, pay a stipend, and you just have to make yourself available, you know. Uh, on the weekends.
For calls.
For calls, and you know, and then we'll have to obviously train that person in what they need to do.
I'm gonna have to find money, but, um, I just, and it's only two, it's only two months, really, right?
Yeah.
I'm just about to.
Like, it's really July and August, so what are you willing to pay, and and maybe September, maybe you're paying for the September, even though it's a half a month. So what are you willing to pay for someone to be on call every single weekend, I mean.
Could we barter vacation hours?
Maybe four hundred minutes, like maybe four, comp time, flex time.
Got an, just got an idea.
Yeah, sure, yeah, sure, yeah, absolutely, I'd be favorable for that, instead of paying them an hourly wage, do they want, you know, X amount of hours per week for comp, credit time, whatever it is?
Like a vacation, uh, this gets like sticky with the wage act and everything else, I'm not sure, but if like, if there was.
Yeah. And then.
Well, we can, we can further discuss it and discuss it at the next meeting, see what we can do as far as the the hours.
Yeah, I'm just thinking a stipend, like maybe, I don't know.
A stipend seems, that seems straightforward.
Three hundred, three hundred dollars a month, I mean, you're, you're gonna be on call every single weekend.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a tough one, especially in the summertime.
Four hundred dollars a a month, I mean, and like I said, it's only two months, so it's, it's a thousand bucks.
Max.
That we would have to pay, or maybe less, and I know it's like, it just seems like every.
And we don't, we don't have the money in our.
We can probably take it out of the beach and boat ramp, depending on how that, how that fund looks like right now, right?
Well, we haven't had to pay any of the details, so you have money there.
Yeah, absolutely, that should be pretty good.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, one detail for one day is four hundred and some dollars.
Yeah, so.
We're saving that, and I haven't, I haven't.
So I'm just thinking that that would incentivize, I mean, I don't.
Or maybe I'm a hundred percent on board with that, if we can get an employee to do that, then, yeah, we should incentivize.
And we could quit it, maybe get two, you know, and somebody does two week, two two weekends.
Weeks on, weeks off.
And they get paid two hundred bucks a month for doing two weekends on.
Absolutely, tell you what, let's let's get a list together, it's not only agenda today, right? So, and put it on for next agenda, next meeting to say, hey, this is what we discussed last meeting, this is, we have X amount of bodies that can do this. Here's the stipend per month, and then approve that.
But wait, oh, well, yeah. And I mean, do you wanna work on the agreement, Carlos, and then we can just put it to you, I mean, do we need to vote on it at that point?
Yes.
Cause I mean, time is of the essence, right?
Yeah, I think, I mean, you can authorize.
So we can authorize you to work with Debbie on coming up with the agreement, and, cause we, if we have to wait till the next meeting and then, you know.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, no, I think we can even make that happen, that's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I think that might work.
So. So I'll make a motion to authorize, um, Carlos and Debbie to work on a, uh, stipend to, or. An agreement to, um, put somebody in charge of the boat ramp.
Um.
And beach employees.
You made the motion.
I made the motion, actually, second.
Okay, I'll second it, I'll second it.
Then I think, cause you're you're the, so you.
Right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
And just one last thing on that.
Real sloppy motion there, but sorry.
One last thing on that, is when do you want the staff that we do have to start, I I don't think we can get it done for this weekend.
Right, this weekend is too too soon, we've been trained, get all the paperwork in, uh, have they, have they already completed all their queries and all the paperwork associated?
Okay. Uh, the, the first two, yes, the last one, no, but.
Okay, okay, I'll work on the third one to get him in there, and then put it back out, I'll, uh, I'll push it as well on my end, get more people.
Yeah. We just have to do some training and Luanne's on, she's on vacation, don't, she's not really here, she's on vacation.
Will ensure the kitchen, so she stays on vacation.
Um, and so, we, it, and I didn't do it last year, so I can't really train, so I, I'm thinking next week would be better for us to try to train.
And just. One of your new hires is going on vacation as of the eighth, for that week, we've been on the air.
Yeah, we have one on vacation, eighth to the thirteenth, that means, I mean, it's just, it is what it is, it's gonna be difficult.
Yeah, it is, it is.
It's the timing, yeah.
Yeah, it is, no, let's, let's, yeah, absolutely, next week should be a good starting point, um, and then we'll learn, let's just learn from there and move on.
Alright.
Move on that way.
Alright.
Alright, so, I think that's all we got, so we'll sign pa- papers now, we have anything to sign, and then.
I think that's all. Do you just wanna, the the last thing is the, um, discussion on joining BP Technical School?
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, missed that, one second.
Yeah. So I just, I I think we're gonna set up a joint meeting with the vocational exploratory committee, that title always gets me.
Yeah.
Um, on the twenty fifth of July, if that's good for everybody, um. And I'm, you know, doing as much legwork as we can, the topic of maybe doing a mailing to people. I have to find money and budget for that, but I work on that, and we'll start working on putting a mailing, a mailer flyer together. So that you guys can look at it to approve, to go out to the residents, so they can start really thinking about this option and what it, what it means to them. Um, both for the benefit of the children, but also what the cost is gonna be to the town, the projected cost. Um, which if I remember correctly, it it was about thirty dollar, I don't remember, thirty dollars a quarter per household, average household.
Right.
Um, increase in taxes, so, um.
Significant, you know, but it's.
And I guess so the, so the question comes down to, you know, is. I wanted to have a town meeting to present this to the town, in case it fails, we would have time to regroup before our, our regular special town meeting in October. Uh, but maybe it's too soon, because we just haven't gotten enough information out yet, and we don't know what the, our feedback's gonna be.
Yeah.
So we can, we we would have to on that twenty fifth, we would have to have a warrant, we would open the warrant, put the. The articles on the warrant and close the warrant that night in order to get ready for August fifteenth, so we can be thinking about that, but also. This whole thing revolves around whether we can get a debt exclusion for the cost of the new school, at least in my opinion, right? Because if we don't, it's going to hurt our operating budget, so.
Right.
We could always go for ballot question first, to see if the town would be willing to do the debt exclusion for the school. And then go to town meeting and vote to, um, to go into agreement to join the the agreement with the Bristol Plymouth Technical School. So I just, I'm not sure what the best, uh, foot forward in terms of. Procedurally, because if we join the school and we don't have the debt exclusion in place, which require, will require a town meeting vote by itself after the ballot, I think. If we don't have it in place, um, we have to pay that no matter what, we have to pay it, so if we don't get a debt exclusion approved by the residents of the town. It comes out of our operating budgets, and it's probably around seven hundred thousand dollars minimum. Um, and that, it will, it will severely hinder our operating budget for the town. So it's real important, it's real important, and, um. And I don't know the pulse of the town, right, I don't have any sense, uh, I I, you get both, most people are in favor of the BP school, I don't know if they, if. Those are the people that have the kids and want them to attend, I think a lot of the residents who don't have kids aren't interested in that at all, when they hear their taxes are gonna go up, will have a different, uh, point of view.
Yeah. Yeah, it's it's a pretty big, you know, you know, right now they're looking at ten million dollars, right, that's ten million dollars, so, uh.
And it's their money, right?
It's right to their money, so we have to make sure all sides of the of the equation here know everything, all the A B Cs of it, get it out to the public, and then let them decide.
And unfortunately, we don't have a ton of information, right, but we'll be working on gathering that, um, I actually reached out to BP's, can we, can we.
Right.
As residents, take a tour, like, can we take a tour?
Yeah.
I know that the group has, the committee has and stuff, but, um, he's on vacation, I believe, probably because the school just let out, I will circle back and. Get as much information as we can gather in-house, so that maybe on July twenty fifth, if we have that joint meeting, we'll have, um. Maybe some of the residents come and ask questions, and we'll work on getting a flyer out with all the information that we can gather. And decide whether it makes sense for us to have a special town meeting in August or not.
Right, he's, he's really these two questions, one, we have that exclusion, and two, that we join BP, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So, one hinges on, and one really affects the other, so if one is no, we have to let the town know, hey, that's seven hundred thousand dollar hit every single year for thirty years. You know, it's not a one-time thing, so everyone needs to know what's going on, and.
Right.
For or against, at at this point, the residents decide and we just move forward on those decisions.
Right, and I wasn't part of the committee before I came, you know, so I don't know what other schools they did explore, we do know that every vocational school is building a new school.
Yeah.
So, um.
So now this one is gonna be another one.
Right, it's just, it's probably the timing of when the new schools would be built, right, Old Colony is, I I know I'm looking to start the process with a feasibility study. They're, they're.
And we're also not a part of that.
We're not, no, we're not part of anything, right, the only thing we're a part of right now is Bristol Aggie.
We're not, we have to go to city.
Yeah.
Um, so, but Diamond, I think is also in the Kiwi to build a new, so. It's sort of, it is what it is, but I don't know how much information I should get on anything else, just because I, people will ask, right?
Yeah, and it's tough, because one of the things that instantly comes to mind is, well, how much will it cost if we go to Old Colony, how much would it?
We just don't know.
No, right, and they, they don't know what to tell us, because to your point is, we could get current numbers from them, but then.
They don't know.
They're gonna go build, they wanna build a new school at Old Colony, so what's that gonna cost down the road?
Right.
We're gonna be a bigger part of Old Colony than we would of BP, so we're gonna be more responsible.
Right.
Now, that being said, the school will be smaller, so it won't cost as much, so it's all relative.
Well, I think in reality, the school will cost about half as much as BP, cause it's gonna have the, um, number of students. But our residents will be double, so I think ultimately, I think you'd be really close, and I'm just totally speculating based on like.
Porcedome. Yeah.
Exactly, yeah, so it all evened out, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Those numbers that, that the school, the the enrollment is half of, you know what I mean, so, don't anybody hold me to that, but I think, yeah, you're right, we're gonna.
I already wrote that.
You know, yeah, just so, you know, so ultimately, yes, so then it comes really down to the schools themselves. And ob- obviously, we know there's a history of Old Colony and what has happened, um, and BP has been great, has graciously accepted our students. Um, again this year, we've got more going again, um, in the fall, so, there's a lot to hash out, for sure.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to throw those things out there, everybody start thinking about it, and we'll, we'll forward with that July twenty fifth joint meeting.
Excellent.
Alright, yeah, yeah.
That's it, so I am.
Alright, so now we're gonna sign, and then we'll.
Alright, sign away.
Top one?
Yeah.
Hi Lola, how are you today? How's the boat ramp, are you east starbuck? Would you book this?
There.
Aye?
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll make sure I've got everything.
So sign here, top one has been in. That's it, sign on.
That's for this, this is three copies of K five's contract.
You're welcome.
Thank you, for the ambulance, you are the.
Mm-hmm.
Covered entity, correct, Deb? We want them to sign with the covered entity.
Yes.
Sorry, this is our representative. This is also to them as well.
And the, they all sign, I just say.
This one's just do the other one, they all do, I think.
And then it's right here, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the same, three salty warriors.
Did, can Carlos sign on these yet? Cause I know with this, I was just waiting, so I didn't know if there was something you needed to do with that before. They all isolate this.
Same right from the camera, call me Lola.
I bet too.
Right there, so that Lori can't see where you're.
All right, these are all the contracts.
Yeah, there's a rule.
Get fifty five thousand dollars if you're interested. This is the asset disposition service for the place.
I started like three different times.
Board of Health, you mess, yeah, I think you guys just do. Yeah, you do the front and then Deb does the next one back. And that's let's, and I'll drill on those.
How many things have they, what is?
Yeah, it's funny.
Was this?
Funny.
Yeah.
Yeah, just the appointments.
Those are, I mean.
This is for, did I sign? I mean. This is for the champ. So.
You mess champ.
And she's gonna have this, Lola, ma.
I'm gonna sit with her and go through what needs to happen with all this stuff.
Alright, cause I wanna look at this tomorrow.
Yeah.
Give it back to me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was just from conservation. This is the the MO of the place.
You're a walk, I know.
Mm-hmm.
That's just Carlos. And that's actually Debbie, that's the. The changes, I'm sorry. Is that hot or cold in here? Not bad.
All right.
Just gonna get Debbie to do hers and. In here, oh.
Luanne, are we missing one of the the agents for the uh the warrant, the little.
One is what is?
The one, the agents, the Y, agent of the Y, so I.
Right, cause you made that decision tonight, so we'll have to do one for him, I wrote it down.
Okay.
Why is um Jeff Fields signed there? He's an assessor.
Because he's the current supervisor, I think is how they put it through.
Yeah.
Yeah. You good?
All right, so with that, uh motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.